Buenas tardes a todos. Es martes, 21 de julio de 2022. Son las 1:00. Y voy a abrir esta reunión con el Consejo de la Ciudad, representando al Consejo de la Casa y la Observatorio, Consejo de Autoridades de Hacienda, y el Consejo de la Ciudad, representando la Agencia de Sucesorización de la ciudad. Esta es nuestra reunión regular. Y llamaré a este orden y pediré el saludo de la bandera. Steve, ¿por qué no te lo das por hecho?
Estoy listo para comenzar. Le doy la lealtad a la bandera de Estados Unidos de América y a la República por la que vive una nación bajo Dios, indivisible, con libertad y justicia para todos.
Gracias, Steve. Y ahora vamos a hablar del rol. Y me estoy poniendo a la mano a Chrissy.
Consejero Downs.
Presidente.
Consejero Smotrich.
Aquí.
Consejero Wile.
Aquí.
Mayor Protem Kite.
Aquí.
Mayor Townsend.
Aquí.
Gracias. Pasando a la agenda, no agenda, comentarios públicos. Una oportunidad. Está bien, espere un momento, vamos a ir a una presentación. Perdóneme. Y esto es con el director ejecutivo, Jack Newby. Y voy a pasar esto a la mayor Protem Kite.
Gracias, señor Mayor. La ciudad de Rancho Mirage ha apoyado financieramente al Jocelyn Senior Center durante más de 20 años. Hoy es mi placer presentar al director ejecutivo del Jocelyn Center, Jack Newby, quien te va a contar un poco sobre lo que está pasando y por qué es tan emocionante en este momento en el centro. Jack, ¿te gustaría venir?
Muchas gracias. Muy bueno ver a tantos de ustedes de nuevo, señor Mayor, señor vicemayor, miembros del Consejo de la Ciudad, el gerente de la ciudad, Hagerman. Estaba en mi mente cómo empezar. Tengo algunos comentarios que hacer y también un video. Así que empecemos con el video y luego volveré y hago algunos seguimientos sobre lo que está pasando actualmente. Desde 1981, el Jocelyn Center ha estado aquí en el Coachella Valley, sirviendo a los senadores y adultos mayores con una variedad de programas y servicios para satisfacer sus necesidades sociales, físicas y psicológicas.
La socialización es una gran parte de la vida de un senador. Y hay muchos que están isolados. Y esto les da un lugar para ir y hablar con otras personas que tienen otros problemas comunes con ellos. Hay una gran oportunidad para que la gente venga aquí y tenemos la guía para cambiar sus vidas.
La gente que he encontrado aquí son interactivas y amigables y, ya sabes, comunican bien para que me sienta cómodo.
Hay 85 programas disponibles y actividades disponibles para los senadores aquí.
Ya sea tijerío o crochete, bingo, programas de salud como Brain Bootcamp o Maestría de Aging o clases de ejercicio, nuestros programas son para cualquiera en cualquier condición física. Ya sea que quieras hacer aerobics o yoga de silla, está todo aquí en un lugar.
Yo me inscribí en una clase de memoria, lo cual fue extraordinario. Cada vez que dejaba la clase sentía que estaba en un estado real. Fue realmente increíble.
El Jocelyn Center es bendecido de tener voluntarios que quieren devolverle a la comunidad. Uno de los mejores ejemplos es nuestro salón. Los senadores pueden venir, hacer una cita en un salón de servicio completo, hacer su cabello y sentirse mucho mejor sobre sí mismos y cómo se ven.
Como miembro del consejo y como voluntario diariamente aquí en el centro, veo muchas relaciones formándose. Veo compañeros. La gente viene aquí con una cara sonriente y luego se va con una cara sonriente. Han encontrado a un amigo. Es cómodo para ellos. Es un hogar alejado de casa.
Uno de nuestros programas más grandes es Meals on Wheels. Servimos entre 40 y 60 clientes cada día y cada día que sin nosotros estarían solos y probablemente sin comida.
Es muy importante porque no puedo preparar comidas yo mismo. Y así somos muy apreciados por las personas que nos traen un almuerzo preparado y bien hecho todos los días.
No solo reciben un almuerzo nutritivo cada día, sino que reciben una visita de un voluntario que pasa algún tiempo y se inscribe en ellos. Y eso es crítico porque sin ese voluntario pueden no tener ningún otro contacto con ningún otro ser humano.
Son muy amables y realmente excelentes voluntarios. Y me dicen lo que han estado haciendo y les digo lo que no he estado haciendo.
El programa de voluntarios de Meals on Wheels, lo veo como algo, una forma para mí devolverme. Pero dado que nunca realmente sabemos lo que el futuro nos espera, quién sabe, tal vez sea algo que estoy esperando.
El Arthur Newman Theater es una parte vital del Jocelyn Center. Ofrecemos shows de domingo cabaret. Tenemos películas de viernes, seminarios médicos especiales y entretenimiento externo.
Es importante levantarse por la mañana y tener un lugar para ir. Y muchos senadores no lo tienen. Así que nuestras puertas siempre están abiertas para ellos.
En este momento, el Jocelyn Wellness Center es el único centro de salud de su tipo en el Coachella Valley. Ofrece un enfoque holístico de la salud que es diferente de la oferta de cualquier otro lugar.
Creo que cuando asesino dónde estoy ahora, creo que podría haberse retirado a una caja si no tuviera la oportunidad de interactuar con la gente que he conocido aquí en Jocelyn.
No podíamos dirigir el centro y todos los programas que ofrecemos sin ayuda de la comunidad.
El Jocelyn Center ha visto un crecimiento fenomenal. Más del 20% de crecimiento en membresía. De aproximadamente 35,000 personas visitando nuestros programas y servicios cada año hasta ahora más de 50,000. Para mantenerse con ese crecimiento, necesitamos tu ayuda porque la población no se está volviendo menor y tu apoyo es crucial para satisfacer esa necesidad creciente. Así que los programas y servicios que vieron en ese video siguen sucediendo. Ahora tenemos aproximadamente 65 programas y servicios que hacemos cada semana. ¿Qué pasó? La mayoría de ese video fue grabado antes de COVID. Y así estamos reconstruyendo. Y en realidad, COVID fue probablemente uno de los más aterradoros y difíciles experiencias que he tenido que hacer en tratar de manejar un nonprofit y mantener nuestras cabezas por encima de la agua. Sabíamos inmediatamente que perderíamos más de $150,000 o más en ingresos y teníamos que mantener las puertas abiertas. Así que, en primer lugar, déjenme agradecerles a todos por su apoyo generoso y guía y sabiduría. Isaiah ha sido ciertamente un gran ayudante con su input y ayuda mientras que hemos avanzado. Y ahora estamos abiertos. Y estamos abiertos y estamos reconstruyendo, llegando cerca de ese 50,000 membresía o 50,000 visitas por año. Y nuestra membresía se aproxima a 2,000, de vuelta hasta donde estaba. Así que estamos reconstruyendo y ha sido difícil. Continuamos nuestras precauciones. Estamos haciendo un check de temperatura. Estamos preguntando si la gente no ha sido vacinada para usar máscaras. Y acabo de recibir reconocimiento de Desert Oasis Healthcare como habiendo proporcionado las vacinaciones más importantes de COVID de cualquier centro de la ciudad aquí en el valle. Y eso fue bueno porque fue un cheque de $5,000 que llegó con ese reconocimiento. Así que estamos en la fase de reconstrucción actualmente y obviamente lo necesitamos ahora. Somos un centro de refrigeración, lo que hemos podido hacer. No lo pudimos hacer durante COVID, pero lo podemos hacer ahora. Tenemos nuevos programas y servicios que están llegando. Muchos de ustedes saben sobre nuestra Panadería Pennies, pero ahora tenemos cada otro viernes. Pero ahora todos los viernes tenemos servicios de comida con el mercado de agricultores senadores. El segundo empieza mañana. Teníamos alrededor de 50 personas en nuestro primer, y esperamos que crezca mientras la gente comienza a regresar. Y es ciertamente necesario en este momento, dada nuestra clima económico que estamos experimentando. Quería hablar también un segundo sobre el centro de salud. El centro de salud ahora ha sido reconocido nacionalmente por el Consejo Nacional de la Aging como un programa de excelencia. Nuestro Programa de Maestría de Aging y Brain Bootcamp no se ofrecen en ningún otro lugar en la comunidad, en ningún lugar en el Coachella Valley. Y cuando tuvimos una formación y discusión con UCLA, que creó Brain Bootcamp, les dijimos el año pasado, incluso durante COVID, graduamos a más de 125 personas en Brain Bootcamp. Se fueron. Así que estamos haciendo muy bien en esas clases, así como nuestro programa de consejo. Y estoy feliz de decir que una de las cosas que ha cambiado y que hemos visto es que nuestros donadores y personas quieren vernos y el trabajo que estamos haciendo en diversidad, equidad y inclusión. Así que tenemos consejeros españoles en nuestro centro de salud. Somos capaces de proporcionar servicios españoles a la comunidad que habla español. Así que estamos muy felices de poder hacer eso. Y en realidad estamos haciendo algunos grupos españoles y, como dije, consejos individuales. Así que tenemos una gran variedad de eventos que están llegando para el año que viene. Y estaríamos felices de verlos allí. Llegando a la semana modernismo, estamos organizando un evento en la casa de la onda, que está justo alrededor de nosotros, llamado Catch the Wave. Y es un evento temático tiki. Así que certamente los invito allí. Y si nunca han visto la casa de la onda, es realmente un único. Está en el registro nacional de lugares históricos y es realmente un ejemplo único de arquitectura modernista. Nuestro evento de abertura de temporada está en nuestro hogar en Rancho Mirage. Así que asegúrense de obtener ese permiso, Isaiah. Y ese fue un gran evento el año pasado y mucho divertido. Wine and All That Jazz está programado para el 19 de enero. Y esperamos tenerlo en el Indian Wells Golf Resort. Y luego el show de moda de Jocelyn en abril 13. Y nuevamente Susan Stein está produciendo eso. Y fuimos muy exitosos este año teniendo modelos de comunidad. Y realmente incorporaron a sus amigos, vendieron boletos y contribuyeron. Así que una de las cosas buenas de este último año, todos nuestros eventos, eventos de financiación, superaron sus expectativas presupuestarias. Así que hay desafíos continuando. COVID, no sabemos de un día al siguiente. ¿Qué va a pasar? ¿Qué podemos hacer? Sabes, las estadísticas son ahora. Si hubiéramos pasado un año atrás, todos estaríamos usando máscaras o siendo cerrados. Así que ahí es donde estamos ahora con la pandemia de COVID. Así que estamos siendo muy cuidadosos con eso. mencioné los cambios de prioridades para las fundaciones y donadores. Están preguntando específicamente en sus solicitudes de crédito, ¿cuáles son tus planes sobre diversidad, equidad y inclusión, tanto con tu personal, consejo y con tus programas? Así que estamos trabajando en todos esos. Y estoy feliz de reportar, como mencioné, tenemos consejeros españoles. Ahora tenemos un director de programa afroestadounidense. Así que estamos trabajando en esa equidad e inclusión y diversidad, tanto en el consejo como en el personal. Y los presupuestos y las proyecciones siempre son desafiantes porque simplemente no sabemos lo que está alrededor. Así que todos estamos manteniendo los pies. Estamos manteniendo el nivel mínimo posible. Y estamos reconstruyendo nuestra membresía. Así que, con suerte, para los residentes que han visto ese video, los invito a que vengan, especialmente ahora. Si estás gastando mucho dinero en aire acondicionado y tarifas eléctricas, que estamos ahora, vengan a la ciudad del Jocelyn, encendan su aire acondicionado a 80 o 90 y disfruten de nuestro aire acondicionado, relajen en nuestro lobby, participen en algunos de nuestros programas y save un poco de dinero. Así que estoy seguro de que he tomado más tiempo que debería haber. Así que realmente quiero agradecerles la oportunidad y para que les digan lo que está pasando en el Jocelyn. Y estoy ciertamente abierto a cualquier pregunta. Y nuevamente, no puedo agradecerles lo suficiente, no solo por sus contribuciones financieras, sino por sus contribuciones, ya sabes, estar allí en nuestras reuniones del consejo. Richard, muchas gracias. Preguntaron algunas preguntas buenas. Y también solo, ya sabes, venir a nuestros eventos y ser tan apoyador como lo hagan. Es, significa mucho para nosotros como organización y para mí personalmente. Así que gracias.
Muy bien. Gracias, Jack. Y estamos muy orgullosos de ser patrocinadores de ese grupo también. ¿Cualquier pregunta, Richard?
No, pero si no han ido al Jocelyn Center, vayan y realmente miren y vean lo que está pasando. Es increíble el número de personas que voluntarian todos los días, trabajan en los diversos programas. Así que vayan y vean al Jocelyn Center. Realmente lo disfrutarán, creo.
Muy bien. Supongo que eso es todo. Gracias, Jack.
Muchas gracias.
Quédate cool.
Lo intentaré.
Muy bien. Ahora pasaremos a los comentarios públicos no agenda. Esta es una oportunidad para el público para hablar sobre temas que no están en la agenda por un máximo de tres minutos por orador. Chrissy, te paso.
Bien. Así que para aquellos que tienen comentarios sobre temas que no están listados en la agenda, ahora es el momento de hacer esos comentarios. Si estás participando remotamente, quieres presionar *9 en tu teléfono o levantar la mano en Zoom. Y comenzaremos con las tarjetas de oradores. Marilyn Bauer.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Marilyn Bauer y he sido residente de Rancho Mirage desde 1997. Y noté que el próximo año será el 50º aniversario de la incorporación de nuestra ciudad. Y me pregunté, aparte de todo lo que tiene actualmente y en el futuro en sus tablets. Y gracias, por cierto, señor Mayor, consejo, Isaiah y personal de la ciudad por permitir que yo hable. Solo me pregunté si iba a haber una celebración de todo lo que has sido parte de. Y también durante los años previos a la incorporación, hace mucho tiempo en los años 30, cuando Rancho Chiquito fue construido piedra por piedra, fue movida unos 68 años después de la pasión del consejo a nuestro parque. Duncan Emmons, 1955, se abrió como primer negocio. El edificio todavía permanece ahí hoy. El nombre está en la calle en honor de eso. Eric's Furniture, 1960. Y todavía reside como el corredor de éxito hoy, seguido de tantos otros negocios que se han iniciado. El éxito empresarial de Brantini Toffee. En los años anteriores, en los años 60, hemos tenido donaciones de los que Bob y Dolores Hope hacia el desplazamiento en el centro de medicina Eisenhower. Seguido de donaciones del Annenberg Center para el Museo de Descubrimiento de los Niños. Tantas, tantas partes del pasado que me encantaría compartir con los actuales y también residentes que solo están entrando en nuestro valle. Saben que es hermoso. No entienden realmente lo que llevó, aparte de tus esfuerzos, a llegar allí. Y me encantaría verlos celebrar eso. En adición, el highlight para mí cuando estaba en la Cámara fue cuando vi la anexión histórica con Agua Caliente y la ciudad de Rancho Mirage. El antiguo jefe, Richard Milanovic, a quien admiré por sus habilidades de negociación y habilidades de comunicación. Y en ese momento, Richard Kite estaba en esa parte de ese panel, creo. Y Dana Hobart, el antiguo Alan Seaman, Ron Meepoos y Gordon Muller. Eso fue un highlight. Era enorme. Y mira lo que se ha convertido, un resort de cinco estrellas. David Bryant. Oh, y por supuesto, el observatorio. Aniversario de cinco años próximo. David Bryant estaba en un panel conmigo en la Cámara de Comercio. Fue un ex director de la biblioteca. Y creo que lo puso en un solo capsule. Y esto dice, nuevamente, para todos ustedes y aquellos antes de ustedes, incluidos los gerentes de la ciudad antes de ustedes, Randy Binder y Pat Pratt, todas las primeras damas y caballeros. Y dijo, Rancho Mirage es una ciudad joven rica en historia. Espero que podamos celebrar eso el próximo año. Gracias.
Marilyn, déjenme decirles que el personal ha estado trabajando en eso durante muchos, muchos meses. Tienen muchas cosas buenas saliendo. Y estoy seguro de que serán muy orgullosos, junto con el resto de nosotros en la ciudad y en el Coachella Valley, en nuestro 50º aniversario. Fue muy bueno de ustedes.
Gracias, señor Mayor.
Gracias.
Señor Mayor.
Sí.
Marilyn, Marilyn, antes de que vayas.
Sí.
Creo que es algo que la mayoría de la gente no sabe que eres la persona, creo, que hizo la sugerencia de tener un observatorio.
Lo hice. Estaba en la discusión en la Cámara en 2015.
Sí.
Y en ese momento Dana Hobart y les preguntaron qué cosa maravillosa sería introducir a la ciudad. Y dije, construimos un observatorio. Y lo recordaré siempre. Dana se volteó a mí y dijo, me gusta esa idea. Y luego lo llevó al Consejo de los Residentes. Y así, sí, gracias por eso.
Sí, y gracias.
Estoy muy orgullosa.
Deberías estar orgullosa. Fue una gran sugerencia. No se cayó en los oídos. Lo tomamos en serio. Y sé que Charlie pagó una gran parte en hacerlo suceder también. Pero solo muestra lo que se puede hacer con solo unas pocas sugerencias que, ya sabes, la gente puede no pensar que son significativas, pero realmente son. Así que siempre estamos abiertos a sugerencias.
Gracias.
Has jugado una gran parte en nuestra ciudad también.
Gracias, consejo Smotrich. Y sí, porque aparte del consejo, también son residentes, propietarios de negocios, comisionarios y voluntarios. Así que nuevamente, a nosotros. Estoy muy orgullosa de estar aquí.
Bien. Gracias por venir.
Gracias, Marilyn.
Abigail Wright.
Buenas tardes a todos. Soy una casa de主人 muy enfadada que vive en Casas de Seville. Y estoy muy descontenta de que estés cambiando Duval en la calle más fea de Rancho Mirage, incluyendo nuestro lugar llamado Casas de Seville. Y veo que requieres un arquitecto de paisaje para la aprobación de desarrollos que van a calles como Duval. Y el 20 de abril recibí una copia de un plan de la Conserve Gardeners para el exterior en Duval. Y no tiene identificación de nuestra entrada. Tiene su calle Kevin Lee, que es por la calle. No tiene nuestros nombres de calle correctos en el mapa. Y no soy profesional para mirar estas imprentas. Pero he trabajado con Ron Gregory y Rob Parker y varios arquitectos durante los 40 años que he vivido aquí y aprobé sus proyectos de paisaje desierto. Pero ciertamente no tenemos buenos arquitectos de paisaje para Duval. Y les estoy preguntando. Teníamos, descubrí, esto me fue dado el 20 de abril. Y el 25 de mayo, su Consejo de Revisión Arquitectónica, un hombre llamado Paul Sturwell, stampó los planes para nosotros. Y es atrocioso lo que se ha hecho fuera de Casas de Seville. Fue un parque hermoso cuando compré allí hace 12 años. Y intended, esperaba ver que sería un parque. La entrada es horrible. De todos modos, quería traerlo a su atención, su Consejo de Revisión Arquitectónica. Pudiera cuestionar a este hombre, Paul Sturwell, si o no debería estar en su comité arquitectónico. Gracias por escuchar.
Gracias, Gab. Feliz de verte aquí también.
Gracias. Si alguien quiere fotografías de cómo se ve y cómo se veía, las tengo.
Pueden dejarlo con el policía de la ciudad.
Gracias.
Gracias, Abby.
Feliz de verte.
Susan Ragsdale.
Abby. Allí, si quieren dar las fotos.
Oh, gracias.
Buenas tardes. Este es mi reporte final para ustedes. El 20 de mayo, la administradora de la propiedad de Whispering Waters me dio la servición de la terminación de la propiedad. Cuando hablé con ella, ella me informó que si no vacío el 31 de agosto, dos policías me bloquearán de mi casa y seré servida con una verdadera evicción, lo que haría imposible volver a alquilar. Bajo la orden, firmé la terminación de la propiedad. Así que no, es legal evicitarme si no vacío. Con el estrés traumático a largo plazo que he experimentado desde alrededor de diciembre de 2019, casi no funciono. Y ahora siempre me preocupa que dos policías se acaben de llamar la campana. Todas las acusaciones en los documentos legales de Hyder son falsas. ¿Dónde está la prueba o un testigo creíble? Soy inocente. Confió la administradora de propiedad. Su deshonesto intento de hacerse parecer mejor y hacerme parecer una loca y un hostil problematista me ha lastimado severamente. Oh, ha sido terrible. De todos modos, los administradores de propiedades, mentiras engañadoras, afirman que participo en drama con los burlas y que provoco a ellos. Al contrario, sé mejor que involucrarme con personas hostiles e irracionales. El abuso me asusta. Siempre逃逸. Para protegerme, necesitaba desesperadamente prueba de abuso. Llevó mucha energía finalmente grabar burlas y eso requería que algunos se involucren con ellos. Me metí en peligro para lograr lo que era necesario. La verdad es que made the property manager look bad by keeping a written record since March 2019 of the hostile living environment at Whispering Waters. Además, descubrí su error de leasing a nuevos propietarios without checking the landlord verification at their former housing. For a year at Whispering Waters while videotaping, this bully team emotionally abused 10 women and one six-year-old grandson of a resident. But mostly they abused me on a daily basis for a year. Seeking protection, I petitioned the Superior Court for elder abuse restraining orders against these neighbors. Judge Evans did not grant them. Ultimately and indirectly, Judge Evans made it clear to me that with people like this, restraint from an authority figure can bring about retaliation and could result in murder. Murder. Serio. Estas personas. De todos modos, vieron mis fotos. La mayoría de los residentes de Whispering Waters son agradecidos por mis esfuerzos en persuadir al gerente de mover a esta equipo de burlas a otra propiedad de la ciudad. Ahora los residentes están apalados porque saben que mi evicción es injustificable. La moral de la comunidad es baja debido al deshonesto y duro estilo de administrador. Mi ingreso es 1,483 dólares al mes. No tengo reservas ni activos financieros. Si tengo que ser evitado de mi casa, no tengo dónde ir excepto vivir en mi Toyota Matrix. Y tendré que encontrar un nuevo hogar para mi perro Grace. Le pido a ustedes, por favor, revocen esta desgraciada evicción. Muchas gracias por la oportunidad de hablar.
Gracias por sus comentarios.
Wally Melendez.
Buenas tardes a todos. Cuando, cuando, cuando todos, todos pensamos en el calentamiento global, no sé sobre ustedes todos, pero lo que me viene a la mente es un dicho que dice: "Todas las carreteras del mundo se conectan juntas". Como todos saben, vivimos en un desierto. Ayer, aquí en el desierto, fue 115 grados Fahrenheit. He estado hablando muchas veces en estas reuniones la importancia de cambiar los coches de combustible a coches eléctricos hidrógenos que están disponibles. Han estado disponibles por aproximadamente 10 años. Ahora, el resto del, el resto del mundo no va a estar pensando en coches eléctricos hidrógenos. Pero podemos pensar en ellos. Tenemos los medios. Tenemos un gran lugar para experimentar, para hacer un experimento. Digamos que un día de cada mes, no se permiten coches en el valle excepto coches eléctricos, FCVs. Hagan ese experimento una vez al menos y vean si afecta las temperaturas que estamos obteniendo hoy en día. Ahora, en julio, en agosto es otro mes, igual de malo o peor. Así que hagamos un experimento. Al mismo tiempo, nosotros, estoy hablando de todos. Si tuviera los medios, pondría una estación de carga hidrógena con mis propias fondos. La que se cierra a 100 millas de aquí. No es factible. Ellos cargan hasta 400 millas y todavía no es factible. Así que hagamos ese experimento un día por mes. Vean cómo afecta los partículas en el aire. Muchas gracias.
Gracias por sus comentarios, Paulie. Thank you for your comment, Paulie.
Blaine Seiler. While he's walking up here, just a reminder for those participating remotely, if you have comments, please press star nine or raise hand on Zoom.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. My name is Blaine Seiler, and I'm a resident of Rancho Mirage. In late May, I bought a historically designated home in Tamarisk Ranchos. It's my dream home, and I love it. But home inspections revealed I have significant Section 1 dry rot damage and a leaking roof that is mostly beyond its useful life. You can imagine how important it is for me to have these repairs completed, especially since we're beginning monsoon season. I contacted Ben Torres to let him know that I was having my roof and fascia repaired and replaced. And he surprisingly told me that despite the fact that I am not replacing anything original to the home or altering its design, that I would need to submit those plans before I could have the work done. But he thought that he could review and fast-track them if I got them to him quickly. I did so in person with hard copies the next morning here at City Hall. I waited three weeks before I called to get the status. He reviewed the plan the next day and then asked 10 more questions and told me that I must wait for the historical committee to review the plan within a 60-day wait time. I'm here today because I would like for council to qualify these types of work to be presented to the historic committee. I have not found any documentation supporting that requirement, but I have been met with great resistance from both Majda and Ben, the liaison to the historic committee, for cases where immediate attention is needed, like mine, where my, where my home is already in deteriorated condition. Routine repairs and maintenance should not be required to have, to provide a 60-day notice and approval by a historic committee. I have not found any documentation supporting that requirement, but I have been met with great resistance from both Majda and Ben to provide municipal code or government code to support their assertion. Even the program standard agreement the city created is vague in this area. Basic maintenance of a home should be encouraged by a city. And it, there should be no delay for a homeowner to simply maintain their home, providing that the work proposed does not affect the architectural historic integrity. I understand that there are members of the historic committee present here today, and I hope they also would agree. I would like to request a special session of the Historic Preservation Committee or for City Council to either amend which type of work qualifies and what specifically goes to historical committee. And most importantly, I would like someone to review and approve my request to have my roof and fascia repaired and replaced immediately. Without it sitting in a queue for a historic committee to meet in August, my roofers are standing by. I have supportive neighbors within my historical tract, and I'm sure all other homeowners with historic designation would be interested in the outcome of this complaint. So I'm filing the comment with the city clerk for inclusion in the meeting packet. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Excuse me, sir. I have checked into this with staff, and we do have some update. Mayor, do you want to fill them in?
Yeah, the item has been scheduled for a historic meeting on August 3rd at 9:00 a.m.
I got that email from Ben this morning.
So we're looking into it.
I appreciate it.
We're trying everything we can.
Thank you. Sorry, this is difficult for me. I'm not a public speaker, clearly. But I appreciate you giving me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was the last speaker card. Is there anyone else in the audience who did not fill out a speaker card that would like to speak?
Abby? You want to come back?
Yeah.
Come on, my dear.
Can you wait till you get to the microphone, ma'am?
Abby, you got to come up to the mic.
Thank you.
At Casa de Seville, we're being charged $100,000 to tear out 13,000 square feet of grass. Our water bill's a $50,000 a year. We've determined that we will be saving $3,000 by the work that they have done for $100,000. $3,000 a year. That's disgusting. 14, 13, 14,000 square feet of grass for $100,000, and our water bill is going to be down only 3,000. It's absurd. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Abby.
That was the last speaker, and there's no one remote that wishes to speak.
Very good. Thank you, Dan. We will move on to council member, board member comments and presentations or reports. So with that, I'd like to go first, if I may. Upon a long and careful consideration and regarding to running for my third term, I have come to the conclusion that all good things come to a happy ending. I will not seek a third term, but finish this one ending this year in 2022. I have been very fortunate to be elected your councilman and mayor twice with almost a nine-year run, an honor which I hold very special. I have gratitude for your trust in me. I also say that my partner, Gordon Moller, who was here for over eight years and passed away in office, I was very much a part of this community even then and also segue to 20 years in my situation and sitting on the board of the Rancho Mirage Chamber and being a chair, vice chair, and that was a great honor. So I've had a nice, long run, all of which has been absolutely wonderful. And I thank you all for that and wanted to share that with you. I have come to the conclusion it's best to go out on top with dignity and a proud record. I am proud to have taken part in the building of Rancho Mirage today and also what's going on for tomorrow. It is time for me to step down, ending my public service as your mayor and council member. Myself, going on 82 years of age, I believe it is time for a new, younger council to serve on your behalf. This council will be changing over the next few years. I will, at the end of our next election coming up in November, wish those who will succeed all the best for the future of Rancho Mirage and for our residents. It is time to move on with fond memories of past years, having the greatest respect for those who have come before me and remembering their dedication to our city and the trust and the guidance they have given me. Thank you very much. Iris?
Thank you. Today, I don't have any comments, except to let people know that I am wearing a mask, not because I am sick, but because I am trying to stay well. I don't know if it really makes a difference. There's so much data out there that is pro or con. But in light of new variants that are going around in Europe, in India, I thought it best, just to protect myself, maybe protect those around me. So I am wearing a mask again. And you will probably see me in a mask at the market, so feel free to wave. And I will wave back, but just know that we're trying to stay healthy and appreciate, you know, all the work that all of our professionals have done, especially here at City Hall, and how we've managed to stay healthy through this incredible two and a half years. So thank you, and just have a wonderful rest of your summer. We will not be seeing you in August, as far as I know. But I wish you all the very best, and thank you. And thank you so much, Charlie, for all your service. You have made a remarkable difference in the city, as you mentioned, from the chamber years and with the years with Gordon on the council and the years of your commitment to our city and to the entire Coachella Valley and the years that you supplied so many of us with beautiful furniture. Those are the things that you brought, the beauty and the brains and the dedication to Rancho Mirage and to the entire Coachella Valley. And I thank you so much for all your work and all your efforts, and I wish you all the best, although we're both going to be here until December. So we'll enjoy each...
They're not getting rid of us that quick.
We're not going quite so fast.
No.
But anyway, it's good that we were both been able to participate and partake in a city that is second to none. And we've set a standard for the entire Coachella Valley. We are one of the finest cities probably in this country. And we praise every aspect of all the work that we've done. And we owe a great debt, gratitude to staff and everyone on the council for many years. Thank you.
Thank you, Iris. And I'm also very proud of my finger being in several of the remodeling that's happened here in the council, too, and the city hall. So I'm very proud of that. I am living on through that. Thank you, Iris. Mr. Downs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you so much, Charlie, for years of service to this city. Thank you. So today, I want to speak to two items, and then I'll bring them both together. I want to talk about the city commissions. There are actually 10 city commissions, one board and one foundation. I'll call them commissions for simplicity's sake. And they do things like architectural review. They protect our culture, community emergency preparedness, parks and recreations, parks and trails, rather, Historic Preservation Housing Commission, our library and observatory they watch over, our mobile homes, Planning Commission Speaker Series, and traffic safety. So all of these commissions do a variety of things, but they really do one thing. They work to make the quality of life in our city better. And these commissions are populated by 65 various commissioners who serve voluntarily for our city. Let's go on to the next slide if we can. So I've, I'm not going to read their names, but there are 65 of them up there who voluntarily serve to provide these commissions with, with the best service and building the best possible future for this city. Now, there are a couple of groups that I have not included here that also bear mention, bear mentioning, our library and observatory volunteers and our citizens on patrol who, who work for our COPS group. Now, all of these people, as I said, they do one thing. They work to make our community better and make our quality of life better, and they do it on a voluntary basis. So I wanted to salute them, and I wanted to mention them today. Now, the second thing I wanted to talk about today is a great job that our marketing department and are doing in a variety of videos that they have produced for our city. So what you're looking at is, if you go to the city's YouTube channel, City of Rancho Mirage, and if you click on videos, you'll see a list of these videos. If you scroll down to as recently as 2021, you will find that most of the videos that are posted are of these city council meetings. If you scroll back up to 2022, you will find what you see today on, on this graphic, which is that most of the videos are about the quality of life in this city and things that make our city a better place to live. And I very much appreciate the work that our marketing department is doing on these various graphics. So how do I want to bring these two things together? So I've suggested to our director of marketing that he and Kai Beach, who is responsible for recording these videos and putting them together, that they think about producing a video or two about our various commissions, about the fact that they are all voluntary, about the good works that they do, and encouraging our citizens, the citizens of the city of Rancho Mirage, to volunteer for these commissions. Sometimes, it's a little difficult for us to fill out these commissions. It's important for our, for our citizens to know what these commissions do, and I think a video or two would be a good idea to help promote the good things that, that these commissions do for our city and to help encourage people to volunteer for our commissions. So, Gabe, you want to say something about that?
Thank you, council member. Yes, so a big shout out to Kai Beach, who is our video production guy. You can see the city's YouTube page dramatically changed when he came on board only six months ago, if you can believe that. So, yeah, we're in the works on creating some scripts and some ideas along those lines, and so we're happy to do that. So thank you for the suggestion.
Great. Thank you, Gabe. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you. That was very good, you know, highlighting that group. Very good. Thank you, Steve. Ted?
Thank you, mayor. And Steve, yes, the, the videos have been a great addition to, to the city and the council. I've had nothing but good comments relayed to me. Just shows off our city beautifully. So great. Glad you brought that up. I have been a member of the Riverside County Transportation Commission for 10 years. And a week ago Wednesday was an initial milestone with the approval of a critically important environmental study. This accomplishment paves the path forward for the next environmental study. Using a train analogy, this is the first big station the project is pulling into. All aboard, we've been waiting for this. For many years, the valley has sought rail transportation to Los Angeles. The 24 members of the commission that were in attendance and voted unanimously, including myself, the cheering and applause that day was reminiscent of a sporting event. The approval of this document means that the staff can now devote their energy to a more local, specific impacts like train routes and specific stations. The project, as you can appreciate, is very complicated and involves the Federal Railroad Administration. Although this is an exciting first step, construction is still many years away. The 144-mile rail line will cost $1 billion. The first study of a round-trip service between Coachella Valley and Los Angeles was in 1991, when the valley's population was 182,000. The 2020 census counted 370,000 people, and the projected growth over the next several decades will increase that figure to 500,000 people. The I-10 is the main link between the valley and the rest of Southern California. Rail transportation would reduce vehicle trips by 107,000 trips during the first year and 178,000 vehicle trips in future years, with the reduction of around 858,000 metric tons of greenhouse gas emissions per year. I hope to be able to bring you further progress reports over time, but this was indeed an exciting first step. And someday, someday, we are going to have rail transportation between the valley and Los Angeles. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Ted. Mr. Richard, last but not least.
I've already said my piece today. Thank you.
You mean you haven't been thinking of something else to say? Thank you, Richard. Well, I guess that concludes the council member comments. I'm now going to turn it over to our city manager for comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I just wanted to take a brief moment to acknowledge and thank all of our city staff members and all of our first responders who work outside during the summer. Obviously, for people like me that work in an office, it's hot just when you walk from the parking lot to the office. But we do have staff members that work outside for a living, and obviously, our first responders are there as well. And I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank them for the service to the city and service to the community, even during the heat. That's it. Thank you.
Do they get hazard pay?
No.
Very good. Next, we're going to have the consent calendar, and I'm going to turn this over to our city manager to present consent calendar items and handle public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You have seven items on your consent calendar for consideration. Item number one is to approve the July 7th, 2022 regular city council meeting minutes. Item number two is to approve the final parcel map number 37182. Item number three is to approve the library and observatory closure for the Rancho Mirage Riders Festival. Item number four is approval of demands. Items five, six, and seven, they all relate to the final acceptance of improvements for track map number 36809-2-3 and -4. Staff is continuing to work with the... Staff is continuing to work with the developer on remediating some improvements out there that need to be made before staff can recommend to the council to release these bonds. That work is continuing. It is progressing nicely. We had a very productive meeting with Polte and their team. So staff would like a little bit more time on this item. So staff is recommending that consent calendar items five, six, and seven get continued to our next regular meeting, which will likely be September 1st. But again, staff is recommending approval of items one through four of the consent calendar and then to continue items five, six, and seven. And that concludes staff's presentation, and we'll go ahead and open up the public comments. If any member of the public wishes to speak on any of the consent calendar, now is the time to do so. If you are participating remotely, you would hit the raise hand button on Zoom or star nine on your telephone, and I'll turn this over to the city clerk to handle the comments.
Barbara Andrew.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members, and staff. You'll probably recall that I appeared before you several meetings ago and expressed concerns about the quality of certain improvements at the Del Webb Rancho Mirage community. At that time, the several homeowners were also present at this meeting, and they too expressed concern about the quality of certain improvements. I commend the council for appointing a subcommittee to look into these matters further and appreciate the efforts of two council members and several staff who actually visited our community and saw the work that we were concerned about. I'm happy to hear that you are making progress in resolving these issues with our developer, and I hope that you continue to move forward and have success in that regard. So I thank you for your efforts, and we'll look forward to further word from you and your subcommittee and staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak who did not fill out a speaker card? Seeing no one, and it looks like we have one person on the line, L. Ritchie?
Yes. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and City Staff. My name's Lorena Ritchie. I am a newly resident to the Del Webb Rancho Mirage. I believe you have received several of my emails and photos depicting the horrible substandard conditions of our calming grounds, and you immediately took action. And you heard my, you read my email and a lot of the other residents. And I wanted to say thank you so much for listening. I want to specifically Ryan Stendell for, he's been very responsive, listening, giving us update as to what's going on. We're not in the darkness. But I just wanted, can't emphasize that enough, of saying thank you so much. And that's it. Thank you.
And that was the last speaker.
Very good. Thank you. Now about council comments. Anybody have anything? Steve?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, yes, thank you. So it was council member Smotrich and I who served on that subcommittee and did travel to Del Webb, and I believe that staff is making a headway in working with Del Webb to work through these issues. I support staff's recommendation that we continue the matters of items five, six, and seven on the consent calendar until the next regular meeting, which, as Isaiah says, will probably be September 1st. I guess it is September 1st. So I support that idea, and I think that we need to give the homeowners at Del Webb and Ryan and Public Works a little more time to make sure that they are moving in the right direction, as we think they are with Polte. So I support that, and I'm guessing that council member Smotrich would support that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. I certainly do support that, and I want to thank staff for all their efforts and also the residents from the development for coming forward. And it was a joy to be able to take a tour and know, you know, what is on the agenda and how staff and Polte are working together. And we look forward to the next meeting. Thank you so much.
Very good. If that's it, Steve, you want to make that motion? Richard?
Question to Isaiah, that date in September, do we have a cutoff date for the approval of these bonds for that? There's no cutoff date that we have to have it before a certain date?
No, there's no cutoff date. And even after, you know, whenever the bonds are released, we still have the warranty bonds in effect for a year after that date.
Okay. Thank you.
I will call for a motion.
I'd be happy to make that motion, that we approve the consent calendar absent items five, six, and seven, which shall be continued until the first regular meeting of this council in September.
Very good. I have a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Very good. Next is public hearings, and it is amendments to the adopted housing element update, and I'm going to turn this over to Maya Duke.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Today, you'll be considering minor amendments to the adopted housing element that was originally approved on March 3 of this year. Give me just a moment to get our slide up. To give some background on the element, every city and county in California is required to adopt a general plan, which serves as a visioning document for the development of said city and/or county. The general plan is simply a blueprint for citywide or countywide development and is made up of elements. There are seven elements that must be included in every general plan, one of which is a housing element. The housing element reports on the city's existing housing inventory and provides for the development of housing to meet the growth anticipated for the future. It also provides both citizens and public officials with a comprehensive understanding of the housing needs in the city. Unlike the rest of the general plan, the housing element must be updated on a set schedule established by the California Department of Housing and Community Development, known as HCD. The element must now be updated to cover the sixth cycle, being the 2022 to 2029 planning The city council adopted updates to the housing element for this cycle in March of this year. The updates included an assessment of the existing goals, programs, and policies. It also included identification of potential sites that could accommodate our designated regional housing needs allocation, known as the RENA. The RENA quantifies the anticipated need for housing within each jurisdiction of the state during specified planning periods. On May 13 of this year, HCD requested minor revisions to the adopted element to make it compliant with state requirements. These revisions included the addition of metrics to some of the established programs. No comments were made regarding our site selection or RENA distribution. Staff proposed revisions based on HCD's comments and resubmitted the element for preliminary review. On June 1, HCD concluded that the minor amendments met statutory requirements and stated that the element would be in compliance once the changes were formally adopted and submitted to HCD for approval. On the screen, we see an example of one of the programs that required amendment, and the change is indicated in red. Attachment 8 of the staff report includes all the amended programs. Staff has not received any public comments for this item and recommends that the city council find that the previously adopted negative declaration for the 2022 to 2029 housing element update is still valid. In pursuant to sequel section 15162, no further environmental review is required. An adopt resolution next in line amending the adopted 2022 to 2029 housing element update. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Maya. Appreciate that. I will now turn it over to our city clerk, Chrissy, for public comments.
Thank you. For those participating remotely, if you have comments on this item, if you want to provide public testimony, you would press star nine or raise hand on Zoom. I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who has comments on this item? Seeing no one, and no one on Zoom.
All right. How about some council comments? Anybody have any? Nope.
I'm just happy that we're getting to the end of the road on the affordable housing, the housing element to our general plan, including affordable housing.
That's very good, Steve. Very good. Well, then, with that, I will call for a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that the city council find, A, that the city council find that the previously adopted negative declaration for the 2022-2029 housing element update is still valid, and pursuant to sequel section 15162, no further environmental review is required. And B, adopt resolution number 2022, next in order, amending the adopted 2022-2029 housing element update.
I have a second, please.
I'll second.
Very good. I have a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Number nine is resolution number 2022, next in order, approving the designation of the residents in Rancho Mirage for historic resource. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Ben Torres for this.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the city council. The subject property is located on the east side of Marbor Drive, as shown in red. The 2,400-square-foot residence with a 504-square-foot garage is situated on a .29-acre parcel. The home was built in 1958 and was designed by architect David Friedman in a mid-century modern ranch style. This was the first residential property and model home designed by architect David Friedman at the Sunny Lane Palms Estates Development. The following is some background on David Friedman. He established his own design firm in 1947 and was active until the 1980s in Southern California. He was also referred to as a prominent member of the American Institute of Architects from a 1950s news article. The majority of his home designs were for housing tracks, and he had the ability to create a wide variety of housing styles in one development, which made his housing tracks sought after, with the various design touches incorporated. These are some pictures of the residence showing the wood board and badened siding along the front, smooth stucco along the rear, and stone exteriors along the garage portion fronting Marbor Drive. Also visible along the front elevation are the home's triangular clear-story windows. This residence was the model home, and renderings of the home were featured in an advertisement for the Sunny Lane Palms Estates Development in a 1957 Palm Springs Villager magazine advertisement. The advertisement listed David Friedman as the architect and describes the development as 23 ranch modern homes. On this map, you can see the home's location and the overall project site of the Sunny Lane Palms Estates tract home development, bounded in red. The Historic Preservation Commission first reviewed a historic designation request for this property on November 10, 2021, and instructed staff to coordinate a property tour. On December 1, 2021, the commission toured the property and discussed various alterations that were made to the home, which included enclosing the home's breezeway between the garage and the living area. On January 12, 2022, the commission further discussed the restoration work required in order to consider the home for architectural designation. And lastly, on May 11, 2022, an updated historic designation request was presented to the commission requesting designation based on the home's previous owners and the home's significance to local history. The commission agreed that the residence met the requirements for designation only regarding its significance to local history and not based off the previous homeowners. The historical significance referenced by the commission included the prolific work of architect David Friedman. The commission referenced the economic status buyer that tract homes were built for, tract home value regarding interesting details provided in design for a lower cost, and the fact that this home, being the model home in an early tract home development, helped guide architectural design into the direction we see it as part of that time period. These factors make this residence uniquely qualified for designation as a historic resource. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council adopt resolution next in order approving the designation of the residence located at 37190 Marbor Drive as a historic resource pursuant to Rancho Mirage Municipal Code Chapter 15.27. That concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. And I will turn this over to Chrissy.
Thank you. So now's the time, if anyone wants to provide testimony on this public hearing item, if you're participating remotely, please press star nine or raise hand on Zoom. I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this? Seeing no one, and there's no one on Zoom.
Very good. How about council comments?
Charlie, I have a question.
Sure.
Ben, good report, really exciting area out there. How many homes right now are part of historic preservation?
So currently, there are 70 homes that are designated in two historic districts.
And how many of those homes are located in the sunny hills or sunny lanes?
So there was one home that was designated in 2012 that's located on a Marbor Drive within the same development here.
Really an interesting development. I think anybody who has not driven around and looked at it should do so because it really dates back 1957, I guess, isn't it?
Yeah, this home was built in 1958 and was the first one built, and the others range up until 1962, I believe.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I do have a comment, Ben. Ben, I just want to thank the commission for all the work that you have done on this, also to Melissa Ritchie, who did the most outstanding provenance on this residence. It was unbelievable what she put together the history. Actually, she could have written a book on this alone. But it was also wonderful to see all of the advertising, I think like what Richard is saying, to go back to those eras in the 1950s and 60s and see the development and how they were promoted to everybody, what we were doing here and developing the city of Rancho Mirage. So with that, I commend you all. And with that, if I may, I will make the motion that the city council adopt resolution number 2022, next in order, approving the designation of the residence located at 37-190 May Bear Drive as a historic resource pursuant to Rancho Mirage's Municipal Code Chapter 15-27.
Second.
Very good. Everybody vote, please.
Motion carries 5-0.
And again, I want to say thank you to the owners for hanging in there and doing such a fantastic job in keeping our history alive and well and up to date and in good standing. They should be very proud of themselves. Next, we are moving on to, I believe, number 10, which is the action calendar, and I'm going to turn this over to the city clerk, the staff report, and handling public comments.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Honorable Mayor and council members, the position of Rancho Mirage representative on the Jocelyn Center Board of Directors is currently vacant. Proper notice of the vacancy was provided to the public. We received one application in response to the notice from Mr. Hugo Aguas, which was included in the agenda packet. Mayor Townsend is nominating Mr. Aguas to serve as the city's representative on the Jocelyn Center Board of Directors for the remainder of the current two-year term, which expires July 1, 2024. And this nomination may be confirmed by a majority vote of the city council, and that concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you. I'm going to turn it over for public comments.
Yes, so anyone who has comments on this item, now's the time. If you're participating remotely, please press star nine or raise hand on Zoom. Have no speaker cards? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this? Seeing no one, and there is no one on Zoom either.
Very good. Thank you. Council comments?
Just one. As you saw from the very beginning of the council meeting, there's a lot going on at the Jocelyn Center.
Yes.
This just adds one additional person to the board to really look and see what's going on and increase the quality of the programs there.
Well, Richard, I thank you. Believe me, I had the opportunity to meet with him and interview him. His application, his history is so stellar. It's an amazing one, and he's going to be a great asset to this Jocelyn Center. So with that, as long as I pointed him, I'm going to read that I request that the city council appoint Hugo Aguas to serve as the city's representation on the Jocelyn Center Board of Directors for the remainder of the current term. And he is wonderful. Thank you. Richard has a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Very good. Congratulations to you. Now, with that, we're moving on quickly through here, and we are on number 10. Now, with that, we're moving on quickly through here, and we are on Number 10A, which is the consideration of modifying the turf rebate program in partnership with the Coachella Valley Water District. And I'm turning this over to Jessica Pullman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item I have for council's consideration is an update on the city's turf rebate program and a request for an allocation of additional funds to that program. The city of Rancho Mirage has long supported the reduction of water usage and has encouraged the removal of turf and conversion to more drought-tolerant landscaping through two prior turf rebate programs, which ran in 2011 and 2016. With the most recent, council approved a rebate program on July 7 with an initial budget of $0.5 million. This current program provides a matching rebate of $3 per square foot for all Rancho Mirage CVWD turf conversion rebate projects through a partnership with CVWD, providing our residents in HOAs and commercial properties with a total of $6 per square foot per project for living turf removal. In addition to this, a direct rebate is available through the city for those projects that are required to utilize a landscape architect with a reimbursement of up to $6,000 per project. The current program has exceeded all expectations with over 175,000 square feet of projects submitted to date. The unanticipated demand of pending projects has placed a reserve on the initially allocated budget. It is now proposed that the City Council consider allocating an additional $750,000 to the Rancho Mirage turf rebate program. If approved, this would bring a total program to 1.25 million and result in the conversion of over 550,000 square feet of living turf to more drought-tolerant landscaping. Of the additional $750,000 proposed, it is proposed to reserve $350,000 specifically for residential projects, $200,000 for HOA and commercial projects at the current match of $3 per square foot, and the remaining $200,000 available upon the depletion of these reserves at a reduced city contribution of $1 per square foot for specific HOA and commercial projects. This concludes my presentation, and I would be happy to address your questions.
Thank you, Jessica. All right, public comments. Chrissy, you're on.
Yes, anyone participating remotely, please press star nine or raise hand on Zoom. And first speaker is Victoria Lort.
Good afternoon, Mayor Townsend, members of the council. Wow. I was just here about two weeks ago, you know, in speaking with the city manager, Jessica and staff. I don't think anybody could have anticipated us to run through these funds so quickly. And that just, you know, shows that the city of Rancho Mirage and its residents are wanting to be a part of the solution of drought and are wanting to help, you know, convert their turf to desert scape. And so we are really excited to continue and partner with the city of Rancho Mirage. I also want to extend my thanks to Mina. We've been working very closely with her department this past week as we look at those applications that do require a landscape architect. So I just realized I forgot my name. Victoria Lort, Coachella Valley Water District, Government and Regional Affairs, as well as Rancho Mirage resident. I also just want to remind the council, as well as anyone who's tuning into this meeting, that we do offer a variety of different rebates in addition to our turf rebates. We have indoor rebates as well as outdoor rebates for both residential and commercial customers. And also, for those interested, we do have a free indoor conservation kit. So that's a simple form as well as on our website, and we'll send you out, you know, showerhead nozzles, low-flow aerators for your faucets, just little things that help with passive conservation indoors that, you know, overall target conservation and also helps in your pocketbook, right, and reducing your water bill. I also remain available for any questions, should you have any, but I commend staff, and I've really appreciated, as well as CVWD, in working with Jessica and Kai very recently. Not trying to steal anyone's thunder, but we love the videos that you guys produce here at the city as well.
Very good. Can you just stay there for a second? I'm going to turn this over to our illustrious city manager, who is giggling here and smiling.
Yeah, I mean, one thing this job will do is surprise you sometimes, and so we were here just a few weeks ago, and nobody anticipated that we would be back asking for more money. So, you know, I think it's a great result. A little bit of panic on my part when I got the word that the program was done. We had allocated the whole half million, but after that initial shock, you know, just this is a great program. And I just want to thank the Water District and Victoria, you and your team, you've been awesome to work with. You've made this so easy from a city standpoint, and, you know, you have some great programs out there. This is one of them. So being able to partner in this area, you know, obviously, I think the increased subsidy, so $3 from the Water District, $3 from the city for $6 a square foot, I think really encouraged people to participate in this program and remove turf, which is fantastic. That's exactly what we wanted this program to do, and I think we solved the biggest issue in the last two programs, where we were running a different program than the Water District, and there was confusion and some frustration amongst the participants. This one is so easy. You just go right to CVWD. You don't even have to talk to the city. You do have to get preapproval, so don't start removing turf until you talk to CVWD, but you go through. It's an online application for a residential property. Very easy. They're great to work with. They come out. It's a simple process, and at the end of it, your one rebate check comes from CVWD. And then on the back end, the city is reimbursing CVWD for our $3 that we owe. So again, huge shout out to the Water District for having great programs and making this really easy for us. Now, speaking of Kai, we did ask him to put together the next video for us, but before I play it, this video is going to be used for us if the City Council decides to approve this additional allocation of funds. So because of the demand, we didn't want to have, we didn't want to lose momentum in this program, and so I asked Kai to work very quickly to put this together. So this video is assuming that we'll get approval today of the 750, and this is what we will use to notify the community if the council does indeed decide to allot the additional $750,000 to the program. This video will be accompanied with the eBlast, which is another call to action for our community to take a look at this program. I talked to Eisenhower today, and they were excited to hear that this was on our agenda. They were not in round one, but they really wanted to do a turf conversion project. So I said, tune in at 1 o'clock and see what happens, and they were excited about the possibility of additional funds because they also mentioned that they had a turf conversion project that they wanted to do. So with that, let's go ahead and play the next video if this is approved today by the council.
Very good. Roll it.
The Rancho Mirage's new turf rebate program was met with huge demand. Shortly after announcing this program, the entire $0.5 million rebate budget had been allocated, and with the state's worsening drought conditions, the Coachella Valley Water District says this program is helping the local economy and the environment.
As of right now, we've only been 19 days into the program, and we already have about 176,000 square feet of turf that will be converted to either desert landscape or artificial turf.
That's almost three football fields of grass that have been removed. The city of Rancho Mirage partnered with the CVWD to create this program after the state recently banned watering of decorated grass at commercial sites, including HOAs.
These conversions will save about 9 million gallons of water per year. It's completely amazing because we're obviously wanting to save our most precious thing in the valley, which is water, especially since we're continuously going into droughts.
Residents that applied for the turf rebate program were eligible for a $6 per square foot rebate with a max project size of 10,000 square feet for residential and 25,000 square feet for HOA commercial. Any commercial project where the city requires a landscape architect can be reimbursed up to an additional $6,000 towards the cost of a landscape architect.
We've received maybe about 10 applications a day that we've received, and we're receiving applications on a daily basis.
Because of this overwhelming interest of the turf rebate program, the Rancho Mirage City Council has approved an additional budget of $750,000. Those looking to apply for this program can do so by going on to cvwd.org. Click on Rebates, select Residential Rebates, scroll down to the Residential Turf Conversion Program, and click Learn More and Apply Here. An easy process that saves you water and money.
And the voiceover as well on that video. So I don't know that you have much of a choice now but to approve this, but it's been a fun program.
Wait a minute. What can we do with that if we don't approve it?
We will change the amount.
Is that it? Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. Victoria, is it true with all your giveaways with, what, showerheads?
Mm-hmm.
I heard that you're also giving three-day free vacations for two in Las Vegas.
Yeah.
True? Hotel of your choice?
I'm not sure that that's our specific Water District.
I didn't hear that right. Okay, just kidding. Great, great program. I'm now going to turn it over to our illustrious council for comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
We do have, Mayor, we have one more speaker card.
Oh, we do?
Rick Andrew.
It snuck in there, huh?
Good afternoon, City Council and members. My name is Rick Andrew. I live in the Del Webb Development in Rancho Mirage, and I'm the chairperson of the Landscape Committee. And for the members that just came recently to our development, you probably saw that our development is basically on a desert landscape. All of our plants are on a drip system in the trees. We have very little green areas. We don't have a dog park, but we have several areas that people take their dogs and walk the dogs and that stuff. But my question is, is with the modification, that's what I wanted to talk about for a minute. Number one, is our development, it's not individual, but it's a large master plan development. Are we allowed to apply for this type of rebate?
Yeah, an HOA can apply through the program. Yes.
Okay, so we could. Number two, we have thousands and thousands of plants that are on drip systems. All of our plants and trees are on drips. And we noticed where we're located, we're in the windy belt area, and we get quite a bit of wind. And the ground turf that they put in, it's not turf, but it's a sand. It's a granulated, can't think of the name of it, the sand. It's a rock that they grind very finely and they put over it, but it's blown away, and we have sand under it. Could we do a modification, or has the city thought of, of, let's say, removing drip systems with plants and putting down a rock and boulders and gravel in those areas to hold down sand, which isn't really quite with this modification? But have they even thought about doing something like that here in Rancho Mirage?
So, you know, obviously, for this program is to remove turf due to the amount of water that grass requires. You know, the drip systems are conserve water, and, you know, in a below-sand area, I understand your guys' struggle out there, that sometimes it can be very difficult. The DG will get buried in below-sand and things like that, where maybe larger decorative rocks would stick around longer. But again, that would be through the HOA.
Yeah.
For common grounds. And, you know, from a city's perspective, you know, the community has an approved landscape plan that they submitted, and so if there were modifications to that plan, they would need to come back through our planning department to submit what those modifications are, and then, you know, we would be able to opine on modifying that plan. So there is a process that you could go through to do that.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Chris?
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this matter? Seeing no one, and there is no one on Zoom.
Very good. Then I'm going to go with council comments. Anybody have anything?
Yeah, I'll make a comment.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I received four calls this week from homeowners that missed out on the initial $500,000. And I said that this was going to be on the agenda today, and if it's approved, they would have another chance. I think it's an indication of what kind of pent-up demand there is for this kind of a conversion. I think that CVWD is going to get overwhelmed again, and we hope that's the case. That's why we're doing this. The other great thing is that here's an example of how our city, Rancho Mirage, along with the CVWD, recognizes its responsibility regarding sustainability. And so there are not a lot of cities that will make the effort that we're doing, but I'm just delighted, and I look forward to voting yes on this, along with my colleagues. Thank you very much.
Iris?
Yes, thank you. And of course, I will be voting yes on this also. I'm thrilled with the response that has taken place, but I just want to remind people again that this is a program that has certain requirements. And before you start digging up your grass or removing plants, you need to contact the Water District because there are photos that need to be submitted, there are proposed drawings that need to be submitted. So don't start digging things up until you call them, you submit whatever information is required, and then they will come out and evaluate your property and then give approval or make suggestions. So just, it happens fast. They will be coming out really quickly. So just be patient and make sure you follow all the recommended procedures. Thank you. And thank you, Victoria, for coming back.
Thank you, Iris. Steve?
Yeah, I guess it's fairly clear that this council is probably going to forgive our city manager for jumping the gun and producing a video that indicated that we'd approve $750,000 even before the vote. So I guess we can forgive you for doing that, Isaiah. And by the way, I was at the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors meeting on Tuesday morning, and one of our large destination resort hotels was, did apply, and they are a recipient of funds from this program. Another of our resort hotels, general manager who is on the Board of Directors was displeased that he was unable to get, to get this done in time. So I'm sure that Tom Scaramellino at the Western will be very pleased to hear that we're going to vote for this today. In fact, I'll call him this afternoon and let him know. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Richard?
Not much else to say. It's a great program, and let's hope we need to fund another $500,000 out there, maybe by next week.
Very good.
Well, I'm sure it's a 5-0 vote.
Very good. And with that, I will call then for a motion. Somebody want to make it? If not, I will. Did the City Council approve a modification to the Rancho Mirage turf rebate program on partnership with the Coachella Valley Water District and approval of an additional $750,000 allocation to the program and authorize the city manager or designee to take all further actions to implement the same, including approving and executing all associated agreements approved as to form by the city attorney? I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Well, you're off the hook.
I'm going to sleep a little bit better tonight. Thank you for that. Great program.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Thanks, Victoria. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Next, we're going to go into closed session, and with that, I'm going to turn this over to our city attorney to summarize the closed session items.
Mr. Mayor, I have a video of my raise.
Oh, very good.
Well, since this is our last meeting before our August recess, I hope, I have several items on the closed session calendar to get everybody caught up on before we come back in September. So the council is going to recess in a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1 regarding the following existing litigation matters. Vacation rental owners and neighbors of Rancho Mirage at all versus City of Rancho Mirage. Vacation rental owners and neighbors of Rancho Mirage. Mirage, vacation rental owners and neighbors of Rancho Mirage versus city of Rancho Mirage. And we have a case with an unspecified name, since disclosure would jeopardize pending settlement negotiations, but that is involving a pending litigation matter. We're also going to recess into closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54957 to consider the following matters. A conference with a labor negotiator regarding the following unrepresented employees includes the city manager, executive director, and city clerk, board secretary. The council will also meet with this labor negotiator regarding the same unrepresented employees, which include the city manager, executive director, and city clerk, board secretary. So those are the items that are on your closed session calendar for today.
Thank you, Steve. After closed session, are we coming all back in?
Yes. After closed session, we're going to revere into open session, which means we'll all have to come back out here to take action on items number 11 and 12.
Very good. And with that, I will close this meeting. Good afternoon. It's 5 after 4. We are now back in session, the city council, the city of Rancho Mirage. And this is the 21st of July, 2022. And our closed session announcements, I'm going to turn over to our city attorney, Mr. Steve Quintanilla.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the city council met in a closed session to consider several items that are on the closed session calendar, and the city council took no reportable action in closed session. So the next item we have on your agenda is your action calendar, and we have two items on there. The first item is item number 11, the proposed revisions to city manager, executive director of affiliated agencies, his employment agreement. Item number 12 is the proposed revisions to city clerk, secretary of the boards of affiliated agencies, and that's also regarding the terms and conditions of our employment agreement. So pursuant to state law, before the council votes, so we met in a closed session, and the council had directed me to present certain offers to the city clerk and the city manager with respect to the terms of their conditions and the terms and conditions of their employment agreement. And what was offered to the city manager was an increase in his annual compensation to $300,000. And he was also offered an increase of $50 per pay period for the employer's contribution to his 457B deferred compensation retirement plan. And when he was offered that, he accepted it. So at this point, there has to be a motion to approve the additional $50 contribution to his 457B and an increase of his annual compensation to 300,000.
I'll make the motion to approve both of those items.
I'm sorry. Steve, do we need to do public comments for these items?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we do have some people remote, there's no one in the audience, we do have some people participating remotely. So if anyone wanted to speak on this item, you can press star nine or raise hand on Zoom, and I'll wait a moment. Okay, no one's indicating that they wish to speak.
Very good. And I'm following my script here, and it says next is call for council comments. Are there any? I see none, then I will call for a motion.
I think, as I say, I just made a motion to approve both of the recommendations of the increase for both the city manager and the city clerk.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I think this one's just for city manager.
City manager, yeah.
Yeah.
Just the city manager on this one.
And I'll second that.
Very good. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Very good, thank you. Moving on to number 12, I'm turning this over to the city attorney. Again, proposed revision to the city clerk secretary.
So again, state law requires us to announce what was offered to the city clerk and accepted by the city clerk earlier today. And the city council has offered the city clerk an additional $50 per pay period as the employer's contribution to our 457B deferred compensation retirement plan, and the remaining terms and conditions of our employment agreement remaining the same. So that is the proposed revision. So we need a motion and a vote.
Thank you very much. We are now going to open it up to public comments.
Yes, there's no one in the audience. Is there anyone online who would like to comment? You can press star nine or raise hand on Zoom. No one indicating they wish to speak.
Very good. Then I'll turn it over to council comments.
Anything for me?
I see a none. Call for motion. I will make the motion that the city council proposed revisions to city clerk secretary of the boards of affiliated agencies employment agreement.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Very good. Mr. Quintanilla, is that it? All right, then, we are going to adjourn. We will see you all in September.